Okay. I'm going to call a meeting to order here. This is a city council meeting for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. It's six o'clock on the twenty first of February, two thousand and twenty-three. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, can you do the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Dumas.
Here.
Councilmember Elwood.
Here.
Councilmember Graves, here. Councilmember Coon.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
All present.
Okay, I'll declare a quorum. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion we approve the agenda as submitted.
Ken made a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lynn, seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda is approved. West distributed minutes from the January seventeen meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Linda moved to approve the minutes of the January seventeenth meeting. Ken seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are approved. Any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or memorials? There are none. We'll move on to reports. West distributed the financial statements from January. I looked at them. There was nothing unusual or...
Make a motion we accept statements from January, two thousand and twenty-three.
Ken made a motion to accept the financial statements from January. Do I have a second?
Second.
Barb seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Financials are approved. Standing committees, I should probably clarify that these aren't actually committees. I put them in here under standing committees on the agenda because there's no other little place to put it, but these are actually just individuals working on things and/or commissions. So there's no actual official committees functioning within the city right now. But Jerry, you want to update us on any activity on broadband grants?
Yes, there's a meeting tomorrow afternoon with the new state director of broadband. But there may not be his official title, but unfortunately, I can't go. I've got a conflict. Our mayor is going.
Yeah, it's at one thirty in the afternoon. If anybody wants to ride with me that knows more about this subject than I do. I'm willing to take anybody along that knows something about it. All I know is I get mad when my internet goes down.
That's the Economic Development Committee?
No, broadband.
It's just on broadband?
Yeah. Yeah, this new round of grants, they got money. This is the third round. The first two, the total, Carroll County, total of seventy-five thousand for the first initial assessment in Berryville. They did that and they haven't moved forward with any more money, so.
I think, well, the only message I could bring is that they shouldn't take current providers' data as gospel relative to how good a system or a service they provide. And secondly, you know, don't forget us small towns because, you know, we don't have the lobbyists that the big cities have. So we need somebody in there fighting for the little guy.
That last speed test assessment that we did months ago, that Ed mentioned in that announcement that one of the complaints they had been hearing is that the data they get from the providers is kind of misleading, so.
Yeah, they're going to paint themselves a rosy picture, you know.
I find that when I do speed tests on my machine, if I hook to another Cox provider, it's great. If I hook to anybody else, it's usually less. And I choose somebody several hundred miles away, my own hometown.
Yeah.
And there's two or three providers there and they give similar results, and they're typically lower than if I'm hooking to a Cox server. So there may be some throttling.
Okay, Planning Commission, anything other than the fact that we have some ordinances?
Yeah, the outcomes of our last meeting were ordinance six and seven we're going to talk about tonight. But I'm going to recommend for the future, for the next subjects that we would cover would be the regulation and development of land. We've had several instances where larger properties are being bought and there's been understandings that they may be subdivided, they may be built differently than their zone, and there's an ordinance or there's a citation. The Arkansas statute, fourteen fifty-six, four seventeen, it's entitled Regulations to Control Development Land. And in that document, it says that we need to have plans or plans or procedures in place for developers to come to the planning commission to get permission to develop property. And we've already met one criteria that we have a planning area map that says to the county recorder, you can't accept any plaits without our approval. So we need to get the text done at least to the point of providing a procedure for approval.
And then make sure that the people at the county are aware of the fact that they have that restriction. Because we have some reason to believe that they were still kind of operating like the old days when anybody could bring something in there and they'd take it.
Well, the exact words from the recorder was, "You bring me your cookie recipe and I'll have to file it." That's what she said?
Yeah.
Anyway, that's what we'll work on next.
Okay. All right, no special committees, no old business. Moving on to new business. We have a second reading of... I put it under new business, the second reading of two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero four. So I'll entertain a motion to do the second reading of ordinance twenty-three dash zero zero four.
I move that we approve ordinance twenty-three dash four, an ordinance organizing the governing body by a title-only.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ken seconded it. Lynn, you want to read it?
I don't have it in front of me, sir.
Want me to read it?
Sure.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero four, an ordinance organizing the governing body per Arkansas Code annotated fourteen forty-three, Title One. Whereas the city of Holiday Island has been incorporated in existence for two years and initial arrangements for how the city would conduct basic operations of announcing and conducting meetings, establishing a purchasing policy, establishing bank accounts and maintaining records, establishing a document retention policy was originally specified by resolutions two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero one, zero zero two, zero zero three, zero zero four, zero zero seven, and zero zero eight. And whereas the city does not yet have a municipal code defining conduct of these basic operations, and whereas the city council has determined that it is in the best interest of the city of Holiday Island that an ordinance be approved that sets forth how the city will conduct these basic operations going forward such that the specifications can become part of the city's municipal code once the city ordinance is a codified. So that's the text of the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Otherwise, we can move to a roll call vote on the second reading.
Oh, you ready for it?
Yeah.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves, aye. Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All approved.
Okay, the ordinance is passed on the second reading. We'll take it up for the third reading in the next regular meeting. Moving on, an ordinance, two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero six, to amend text and map in planning and zoning documents. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash Title Six.
I move that we approve two thousand and twenty-three dash six, reading the ordinance itself and not the attachments.
Second. Lynn made the motion. Jerry seconded it. Lynn, you want to go ahead and read it?
Ordinance twenty-three dash six, an ordinance revising the zoning map table and planning and zoning regulations, Appendix seven dash two for Unit two-two-one within the city of Holiday Island and declaring an emergency. Whereas on or about October fourth, twenty-two, the city council of Holiday Island adopted ordinance twenty-two dash six to provide planning and zoning regulations, the zoning map and the zoning map table for within the city. And whereas the city planning commission and city council acted in good faith to accurately record zoning information within the city boundaries for unit lot designations from the available declarations and reservations. And whereas the declarations of reservations for Unit two-two-one were not available prior to adoption of ordinance twenty-two dash six, the zoning was aligned in good faith with the neighboring district zoning. And whereas on or about February tenth, twenty-three, the city was notified by an interested person that a quick claim deed and platte survey for Unit two-two-one, block two, lot one, filed with the Carroll County Clerk on or about September twenty-second, twenty-two, in platte vote J, page sixty-six, was delivered and reviewed. And whereas the land now platted as UBL two-two-one dash two dash one was not illustrated on the Carroll County Assessor website and with detailed information when ordinance twenty-two dash six was adopted and illustrated on the Holiday Island zoning map, Zone RW rural wooded. And whereas this constitutes an exceptional circumstance, that the city council of Holiday Island now finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island and desires to amend the zoning map, text in the zoning map table and the planning and zoning regulations, Appendix seven dash two residential districts lots, yard and height regulations by ordinance, are therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island. And it lists the sections, one is a picture of the zoning map, section two is the changes to the zoning map table, section three is the changes to the appendix. Then four, that the documents entitled zoning map, the zoning map table, and the Appendix seven-two residential districts lot, yard and height regulations shall be updated, reprinted, duly certified, filed with the city recorder treasurer in the city office, and made available on the city website within thirty days. Section five, declaration of emergency, it is hereby found and determined that the amendments to the zoning map, zoning map table and appendix should be adopted immediately in order to provide clarification of the zoning of Unit two-two-one, block two, lot one within the city of Holiday Island and to align with the understanding and urgent development desires of interested persons. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist. And this act being immediately necessary for the preservation and protection of the public peace, health, safety, welfare of the city and its citizens shall become effective on the date of its passage and approval by the mayor. Pass and approve this date.
Right, is there any discussion on the ordinance? If not, we'll move to a roll call vote on the ordinance.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves, aye. Councilmember Coon, aye. Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor?
Okay, the ordinance passes. Now, since it does have an emergency clause, I'll entertain a motion to accept the emergency clause.
Make a motion we accept the emergency clause.
Ken made a motion to accept the emergency clause. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
That seconded it. Any discussion? Move to the roll call vote on the emergency clause.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves, aye. Councilmember Coon, aye. Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor?
The emergency clause passes, so two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero six is effective. Moving on then to ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero seven. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero seven, an ordinance repealing and replacing the planning and zoning regulations for the city of Holiday Island in its entirety in order to clarify zoning regulations for other purposes and declaring an emergency.
I'll move that we adopt two thousand and twenty-three dash seven, an ordinance repealing and replacing the planning and zoning regulations without reading the entire ninety-page document.
I'll second that.
Lynn made a motion to adopt, to pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero seven with the reading limited to the first text, not the entire seventy-five pages of the text. And Jerry seconded it.
Enthusiastic.
What?
Seconded it. Enthusiastic.
For the record, Jerry enthusiastic. All right, Lynn, you want to read it?
Ordinance twenty-three dash seven, an ordinance repealing and replacing the planning and zoning regulations for the city of Holiday Island in its entirety in order to clarify zoning regulations for other purposes and declaring an emergency. Whereas pursuant to ACA fourteen fifty-six, four sixteen, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has determined it necessary to develop zoning regulations for the entire planning area of Holiday Island to provide districts of compatible uses for unified development for elimination of non-conformance and for other matters of general welfare of the city. And whereas pursuant to ACA fourteen fifty-six, four twenty-two, public notice was given by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, the HICPC, of its intent to amend the planning and zoning regulations and advised that copies of the documents were available on the city website for public review and examination. And whereas after due notice as required by law, the HICPC held a public hearing for all persons desiring to be heard regarding certain amended and new planning and zoning regulations. And whereas after thorough consideration of comments and views expressed by all interested persons, said HICPC by resolution, HICPC R twenty-three dash two, on February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, has certified, adopted, and recommended that said amendments to the planning and zoning regulations should be considered for adoption by the city council of Holiday Island. And whereas all comments, views, suggestions, recommendations have been considered and addressed by the city council, and whereas the city council of Holiday Island now finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island and desires to adopt said amendments to the planning and zoning regulations in its entirety by ordinance to better provide for the clarification of terms and uses of the planning of the zoning regulations, are therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island. And it lists sections one through seven, talking about the attachments that are revised. Section eight is another attachment, and nine, and then ten is important, that the planning and zoning regulations for the city of Holiday Island are hereby repealed and replaced in its entirety and as attached heretofore as Exhibit J of this ordinance. Section eleven, that all resolutions, ordinance, and parts of ordinances in conflict here with, to the extent of such conflict, are hereby repealed. That in the event that any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, definition, fee, fine, or other provisions or portion of this ordinance or the planning and zoning regulations shall be judged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any part of provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional. And the remaining provisions of this ordinance shall be construed as if such invalid, unforceable, unconstitutional provision or provisions had never been conceived herein. Section thirteen, that the city recorder treasurer shall maintain two signed copies of the ordinance kept on file in the office of the city recorder treasurer in the city office, one-ten Woodsdale Drive, Holiday Island, Arkansas, and a link to a digital image for public inspection on the city website of www.cityofholidayisland.com. The emergency clause, section fourteen, emergency clause, the city council hereby finds and determines that due to the urgent and immediate need to provide for orderly growth and development and ensure consistency with enacted regulations, these amendments should be made effective immediately. As such, an emergency is hereby declared to exist and general welfare of the citizens of Holiday Island shall be enforced and in effect from and after the passage of this approval. Pass and approve this date.
Okay. As stipulated in the whereas, all of these changes have had adequate vetting in public hearing and in the planning commission meetings. So we're not going to go through all of the changes again in this meeting. Is there any other discussion on the ordinance? If not, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves, aye. Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor?
Okay, the ordinance passes. And since there is an emergency clause, I'll entertain a motion to accept the emergency clause.
I move we accept the emergency clause.
Lynn made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
That seconded it. Any discussion? Move to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves, aye. Councilmember Coon, aye. Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor?
Okay, the ordinance passes. And we'll get that new zoning ordinance updated version posted on the website. Okay, the next on the agenda is a review of updates of the building code. I figured it would be worthwhile, since we didn't have any previous discussion on this before we moved to actually approving the ordinance, I thought it would be worthwhile to just go through the marked-up draft and highlight the things that were changing. We added section eleven, point zero two five, with being more specific about building permits being required for additions and interior remodels. You know, you can see that on page two. I found myself explaining, having to explain a lot when we needed, when people needed a building permit and when they didn't. So we tried to clarify that in section eleven, oh, twenty-five. And then, hold on, page three, we added that a copy of the original survey and stamped by a licensed surveyor be provided when applying for a building permit. Going, you know, way back in history, there were kind of all sorts of things accepted. And one of the things we have to verify when we issue a building permit is that whatever is going to be placed on that property doesn't infringe on the setbacks and easements. And we've had, in the past, it's been allowed for people to do that themselves, you know, to get a copy of the plot and, you know, measure it out themselves and sketch it on the plot plan and provide that as evidence. Well, we found out that people don't always know where their lot lines are. And so, you know, it became problematic. So now the only thing we'll accept is an actual survey showing where that structure is going to be on the lot. And it's only a hundred and eighty dollars or so to have, you know, a surveyor do that for you. And then we said drawings and plans must be stamped, in red, by a licensed architect indicating copies of the original documents. Exceptions can be made at the discretion of the building inspector. This is in react, in reaction again to things that we've run into where drawings might not have been very complete or somebody may have ordered them off the internet as a standard house plan and then made modifications to it. You know, the ones they got off the website had the, you know, the architect's stamp on it. But then they made all kinds of modifications. Well, that was never, that was no longer the original intent of the architect or the engineer that drew it.
But if they buy one that they haven't altered, that they have.
If they buy one that they have not altered, then it should come with the original stamp on it. And that stamp is usually in red so that you know that it's not a copy. So we're getting a little fussier about the documentation that we accept because David's got to go out to the job site and have some criteria by which he does the inspection. If the documentation that we're given is very sketchy and open to interpretation or very incomplete, and then, you know, and then he goes out to the job site to do an inspection and he finds something that's not to code, then, you know, you're butting heads with people. It's a lot cleaner if you have good documentation right up front. We added a statement that design of footings and foundation walls exceeding eight feet in height require drawings approved by a certified engineer. This again was a direct result of bad experience that we had. Going on to page four, I scratched out commission in eleven oh three oh three and changed that to building inspector. And added a job inspection card would be included with a packet of materials that they get when they get a building permit. And I scratched out a copy of the unit declaration of reservations. We mentioned in the building code that the declaration of reservations exists, but I don't think it's the responsibility of the city to provide the builder and/or the owner with a copy of those declarations. We tell them they exist. We tell them where they can find them. They want to print off a copy for themselves, they can't. It just saves paper and administrative time for us. I made a minor change to the fees table. Instead of trying to define what we charge fees for under renovations, I just said other per chapter, eleven oh twenty-five. And on page six, I scratched, more extensive repair involving wiring and plumbing may require a permit and must be reviewed with the building inspector. That is no longer pertinent since we require a building permit if there's extensive changes.
In the first line, do you still have to scratch out about the design and placement?
No. Storage sheds and portable buildings under a hundred square feet, yeah.
Okay.
The, yeah, we had in there the design and placement must be approved by the building inspector, but that's not necessary if somebody's got to put up a little tough shed, you know, for their rigs and lawnmower. Under, on page seven, I just did some cleanups on the flow chart. Nothing important or big there. Let's see, where's the next change? Page ten. We had no private wells are allowed within the corporate limits of Holiday Island. But our zoning ordinances allow for private wells on parcels or lots zoned rural wooded. So I changed that to except as allowed in zoning ordinances. So I changed that to except as allowed in zoning ordinances. And then some technical things, I'm not going to go through all of these, but these are technical things that David wanted in, um, the building code just for clarification purposes. Um, the one, uh, I will offer an explanation on is what a U for grounding, uh, where U for grounding is required.
You also field something, something?
That was a, a, a new term for me. It's a method of grounding named after a guy named Ufer, right? And, uh, it's, uh, instead of, you know, uh, proper grounding of your electrical in your house requires that you drive a rod eight feet into the ground. We'll try driving a rod eight feet into the ground in Holiday Island.
So.
A different and better way of doing it is to lay a piece of rebar in, in your footings, um, you know, along with all of your other rebar in the footings and bend the end of it up so that it sticks out of the footings so you can connect your grounding wire to that. And that makes your whole foundation basically your grounding.
So is that connection internal, it's inside your house or is it outside that grounding? You've been the rebar up and through, where does it come out? Inside the house?
The base of the footing. So any ground contact that's, that cement is hitting is where that electricity is going to add to.
Okay. But if it's a footing and it's got walls on it, where does it come out? Internally or externally?
It doesn't come out, it's embedded in the, in the floor.
Okay.
It's in case.
But you have to have somewhere to connect it to.
Oh, exactly.
Um, the utility would be the service panel, the breaker box, which will have a, a number ten copper wire coming out of it and then it plants to that Ufer board, the piece of rebar.
Okay.
And it's, it's proven to be a good effective grounding system. Uh, okay, moving on then, page eleven. Uh, we just, again, David asked that this, uh, concrete and backfill sloping away from the structure be added. It's kind of one of those, you'd think it'd be common sense, but not commonly applied. Um, page thirteen, we added a section W at the discretion of the building inspector. Engineered soil compaction specification measurements may be required where significant fill has been added to the construction area. Uh, in Holiday Island, that can be a big deal. Uh, if you have a severely slow plot and you try to level out a place to build on by bringing in yards and yards and yard of backfill, there is a, there's a, uh, I'm telling you more than I know about it right now, but there's a specific way of doing that. You're supposed to put some in and then let it down and compact it and then put some more in and let it down and compact it and, and then when you're all done, you should be able to take soil compaction measurements and know that it meets an engineering specification. So if we see somebody doing a lot of backfilling on a, uh, on a particular construction site, we may require that they, you know, provide those kinds of readings.
But one, houses that are under construction now, those rules don't apply.
There aren't any under construction right now that I'm aware of that have that, a lot, a lot of that backfill. This really came up with a, a mobile home installation up on Solid.
Well, I'm thinking of the one that we mentioned every week, the one of, of, of.
On state line?
On state line.
That one's sitting on Solid Rock. That house is sitting on Solid.
If I had anything to it, they're going to have to do some. I mean, the room rangers are going to do something to put it slightly.
Yeah, and that, that's, the, the basis for that is sitting on Solid Rock right now. They have, they have columns in the backside of the house that are filled with concrete and, uh, they, they took all that dirt down to base rock and put the footings in on, on Solid Rock. So the house isn't going anywhere.
Well, where is this?
And then under manufactured homes, we added some more specific information about, um, the, um, rules for installing and anchoring a manufactured home. Uh, here again, um, as a reaction to some bad experience we've had, there's a lot of people that'll hook a manufacturer home up to the, their truck and haul it in here and back it onto the lot, but that doesn't make them a licensed installer and state and federal law requires that they be a licensed installer. That's, that's really kind of with the gist of all the changes, the updates we've made. Almost all of them in reaction to issues we've had in the past. Any questions on that? Otherwise we can move to the ordinance adopting the changes. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight, an ordinance repealing and replacing the building code for the city of Holiday Island in its entirety in order to clarify the building code and declaring an emergency.
I'll move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eight.
Then I made a motion, will I have a second?
How seconded?
Ten seconded it. Um, I guess I can probably read this one. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight, an ordinance repealing and replacing the building code for the city of Holiday Island in its entirety, uh, in order to clarify the building code and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Holiday Island has previously adopted a building code with the last revision being ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero. And whereas several changes and additions are necessary in order to clarify the requirements for construction in the city of Holiday Island and whereas the city is currently issuing building permits and the updates to the building code are necessary to very carry out that function, now therefore it began ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that the building code for the city of Holiday Island revision twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero be replaced in its entirety and that the attached revision be adopted. Since building permits are currently being issued, an emergency is declared to exist. That's been approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Not, we can move to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves, aye. Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, the ordinance passed. And now, since there is an emergency clause, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Make a motion to approve the emergency clause.
Then I made a motion, will I have a second?
All seconded.
Then I seconded it, any discussion? Move to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves, aye. Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor.
And the emergency clause has passed and the, uh, new changes to the building code are enforced. All right, going on to resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three, the resolution to approve the sheriff's contract. Just a little bit of background on this. Uh, we did, um, we did, um, pass an ordinance that, um, authorized, uh, entering into a contract with the sheriff's department. Now we'll stip, we'll read that in the, in the actual resolution, but, um, but that same ordinance stipulated that the actual contract be approved by the, uh, city council. We've been negotiating on this contract for a year now probably, maybe longer. Uh, and I think I'm ninety-nine percent confident that we have it in its final form right now to the extent that I hope to pick up a signed copy tomorrow in very early. So, uh, I would entertain a motion to pass resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three, a resolution approving the sheriff's contract with Carroll County for the city of Holiday Island.
Make a motion to approve, uh, a resolution approving the sheriff's contract.
Ken made a motion, will I have a second?
Seven.
Now I'll read the resolution. A resolution approving the sheriff's contract with Carroll County for the city of Holiday Island. Whereas, whereas, um, eleven twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, the city of Holiday Island passed ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one two, authorizing the establishment of a police department. And whereas the ordinance stipulated as an option, staffing the department with city employees entering into a contract with the county of Carroll, Arkansas to provide law enforcement services. And whereas the ordinance further stipulates that any such contract must be approved by the city council, now be it resolved with the, uh, city, by the city council of Holiday Island, that the attached contract between the city of Holiday Island and the county of Carroll and the sheriff's department to provide all enforcement services for the city be adopted, passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of two twenty-one twenty-three. Does anyone have any discussion or comments or questions on the actual contract?
When is it effective?
March first.
March first, I believe.
Are we, are we going to start off with one or are we going to start off with two? The phase in, we're going to have to, you know, I'll have to work that in with, uh, the sheriff because we're not going to have a car for them on day one and, um, they're probably going to have to hire a deputy. So, you know, it'll phase in over time.
We are, we will have one deputy starting March first.
Right.
Well, we have to pay for both of them starting March first.
Um, no. They're supposed to bill us for the hours that they, that they, uh, they're supposed to provide us an invoice, breaking down the hours that they, they've worked and everything. I, I guess I would have to say that the assumption is going to be right now that they would only bill us for the hours that they put in, but I can clarify that with the sheriff. However, if and when they hire somebody, if that person has to go to, um, the, uh, through training at the, uh, the state commission, uh, I, I fully expect that we'll have to pay that person salary while he's in training, ear or sheet. Any other discussion?
Yeah, yeah, just a couple of questions. The office rent, we're on the hook rip, I assume it's not, we don't have that anymore?
Right, we, we covered that in a different resolution.
Okay. Uh, and then the other question is, this, uh, ten thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars per month, uh, what was the, what was the original contract?
Uh, ninety-six hundred and twenty-five or something like that. It's, the new number is six point seven or six point eight percent more than what the number was last year when we were negotiating this, which is, you know, they gave each deputy a buck and a quarter raise. Um, the, uh, the health insurance alone for a deputy now is ten thousand dollars a year, just, just the health insurance. Fringe benefits for law enforcement personnel in Arkansas is virtually a hundred percent dictated by law. It's all codified, dictated how many days off they get, how many vacation days they get, how many personal days they get, how many holidays they get, you know, the retirement plan, everything is basically dictated. So it's, it's believable that the fringe benefit cost for a deputy could exceed fifty percent of their salary.
I was told that the base, you know, the base price for the deputy was thirty-eight and fringe was twenty-three thousand, so.
I think I found the answer to my question in the contract.
Yeah.
Says honor before the tenth of each month, the sheriff will provide the invoice to the city along with a report of the combined hours of the two deputies. In the event that two deputies were not available during the month, the invoice will be prorated to reflect the actual patrol hours.
That leaves me off the hook there.
That leaves you off the hook.
All right, any other discussion?
We don't want to talk about anything getting related to that, we're just.
No, we're going to deal with the resolution first. Um, if there's no other discussion on the resolution, I'll move to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves, aye. Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
And Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
Resolution passes?
All.
I want to write into the, I want to, that is, um. This, this has been a long, throwback and painful experience.
All right, uh, next on the agenda, um, public comments? Do we need to put the timer on?
Yeah, we do.
Uh, Ken Brown, seven seconds point. Uh, I was in Austin last week, granddaughter's birthday and could not be here for the, uh, hearing, but I had a question of a homeowner in my area that he felt that, um, I noticed on the last couple of slides, you had one of the, uh, requirements was no, uh, garages or prefab buildings for, um, can be allowed, you know? And the one I'm thinking of and the question was, these can be grandfathered in. It was an RV garage built about fifteen feet from the pavement into the yard. And so my question is, because I couldn't be here, I haven't had time to look it up, is that allowable and will anything be grandfathered like that?
Those were grandfathered, they're, they're non-conforming uses.
That was only a minute, Pat. Hard to call it.
Yeah, I, I should defer to this, he's the expert on this.
No, I'm not an expert. They're, they're non-conforming uses, so if something happens to that property, like it loses a roof or whatever, they will not be allowed to repair it and continue to use it for non-conforming purposes, so.
Well, it was part of the covenants that they weren't allowed to do it either, but they did it anyway. And now they're saying.
It's still, you know, it's still in violation of the covenants and if the property owners want to take action, that's their prerogative, but the city, um, cannot retroactively enforce ordinances.
Okay, starting tomorrow, if someone did one tomorrow, Wednesday, can you do anything about it?
Yes. Within the restrictions of our ordinances, I, I don't have on the top of my head what those restrictions are, but first, first and foremost, they wouldn't be able to do one without a building permit. And when they come looking for a building permit, we would compare it to the zoning ordinance to see what's allowable.
Well, those of you who are on the board with me, board of commissioners, know what angst I have about some of these things. And because, you know, we work hard on getting the city and all of you work hard in your commission, uh, council members' role, but there's some people that are just taking it to, taking it to the limit, put it that way. Businesses on the homes, parking on the lawns, uh, RV garages, uh, you know, storage buildings, the little, uh, buildings like over by Walmart. buildings, the little, uh, buildings like over by Walmart, they're all over the place, and I was hoping that when we got to the City of Holiday Island, we would have a lot of that disappear, and it's not.
Basically what, what's in, well, first of all, you know, what's already there isn't gonna disappear, but, um, there, there are things that, um, that are in the unit covenants that the, uh, that cities don't have the authority to regulate, and, and sort of those things are the things that, you know, that are the, you know, the sore points with, with homeowners.
I, I understand that, Mr. Mayor, but I don't have five thousand to hire a lawyer to go after this person in my neighborhood, plus, talk to a lawyer, they didn't wanna do it because the same guy that we're gonna sue for that, uh, RV building would be one of his clients, and they, they don't wanna pick up the, the clients, okay? So we're stuck, we're really stuck. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? All right, uh, mayor comments?
And it's stay at our room, too.
My copy of the agenda, if anybody else wants to make a comment while I'm looking for my agenda.
Little clarification, last week I told you that the, I talked to George Gorbright, and he's, um, he's in the process of building his second dumpster for the cardboard, he said he would pick it up Monday and Friday, I talked to the lady Friday, I, they're in some kind of reconstruction of their offices over there, and you can't reach them at their phones, anyway, I called him back today, and she said George and his second man are working on the resolution for that, and they will pick it up Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Uh, right, well, today, well, Monday was a holiday, and the cardboard truck was broke, so that, that they are well aware of it, and she said she would call me when we get her back, that she's pretty much sure they'll pick it up tomorrow.
On that similar topic, Mr. Mayor, uh, I have been investigating, uh, camera surveillance, and I have found a solution for nighttime illumination, you can get an ultraviolet that'll reach two hundred feet without problem. Problem is that all the camera companies that I've contacted, all five of them, have given me the same response, they can't ensure that you can read the license plate at two hundred feet with their cameras, so the cameras we're gonna invest in are gonna be very expensive, um, like a thousand dollars.
I don't see any reason to do this till, till we can actually find, uh, find somebody.
Okay, well, I can't find my, I can't find my note that I was going to, I made a note on my copy of the agenda of something, I was gonna, just, it wasn't important, it was just informational, so, so all that, but I can't find my agenda anywhere I must have eaten up.
I read your comments on the, the other procedure that Fayetteville was using for enforcement. I, I would like to see us continue the, the district work.
Yeah, the, it, there are some things about that that are appealing, but, um, but I don't think they cover all of the circumstances, and, um, and the very first one that comes to mind is, um, refusing to sign up for trash service, you know, to follow the Fayetteville model, we would have to pick up their trash for them every week and then bill them on their tax bill.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't see how that's gonna work.
No, I, I, I do.
That, that procedure is more designed for people that refuse to cut their grass, so the city goes in and cuts their grass, and they don't repair their building. Yeah, it's not designed for people that refuse to obey, you know, the most of the zoning ordinances and.
The Hoover, they've had, they've had a lot of fun this last week, they picked up.
All right, any other, uh, commissioner comments? Councilmember comments, not, there's, there's councilmember comments. Uh, that will, will scheduling for next month's meeting, regularly scheduled meeting, will Any announcements by anybody? Move to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Then move to adjourn, for a second. Then seconded, any discussion?
Who seconded?
Uh, Jerry.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose, for adjourn. Turn your lights off.